Good evening, everybody. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Madam Clerk, will you take the role?
Councilmember Bill DeLaPeña. Mayor Protam Adam.
Present. No request for continuance, so I'll head over to the podium for special presentations. Turk County Chapter of the American Red Cross is going to bat leadoff, so Tony, come on up and get ready. The City of Thousand Oaks, like most cities in California, is vulnerable to numerous emergency situations such as earthquakes, wildfires, and floods. When such emergencies strike, as they did last year with the fires, our local chapter of the American Red Cross is always available to provide aid and support our residents. On a side note, and this is off-script, but come on over here so I can see you, Tony, if you don't mind, I went out to some of the evacuation centers, and the minute I got there, the Red Cross was already setting up. You guys were so instrumental in caring for the citizens of our community, and now I'm going to go back on script. In recognition of their local work in an effort to encourage everyone in Thousand Oaks to prepare for an emergency at home, at work, and at school, I'd like to proclaim September 2019 as National Preparedness Month. Mr. Briggs, it's time for you to accept this proclamation. Isn't that lovely?
It's very nice.
Look at that. I'm not going to read it because we'll be here forever, because you guys do so much stuff.
And there's a lot of "whereas."
Yeah, there's a lot of "whereas," so I'm going to turn the speaker over to you, and you tell us about the Red Cross in this wonderful month.
Mayor, thank you. City Councilmembers and folks here, thank you so much. My name's Tony Briggs, and I have the privilege of leading the humanitarians here for the American Red Cross, and we are so thankful to be here. We live here, we work here, and we serve just like you do. Talking about the events from last year, it really did shake us to the core, from the shooting to the fires. It really did show us that we need to be prepared at all times, and with this being National Preparedness Month, there is no better time than right now to make sure that everyone in Thousand Oaks makes a kit, they have a plan, and they stay informed. One of the things that we do here is we train. Day in and day out, we have volunteers coming through our offices who do nothing but learn how to take care of people in the time that they have probably suffered the worst thing in their lives, whether that be a home fire, whether that be they're evacuated from their homes, or anything that basically causes someone to have an emergency. So at 2:00 in the morning, our volunteers are there to put a blanket around someone to tell them that we are here, and we're going to be here to see you through that struggle. So on behalf of the men and the women of the American Red Cross, we do thank you for noticing and taking the time to say thank you to everyone from the Red Cross who is a part of our preparedness. Something that we're doing here in Thousand Oaks is what we call our shelter of hope, and it allows us to tell our stories to the community. We'll have our Preparedness Fair here in Thousand Oaks at the street fair, and it'll be on October 20th, and we'll be here all day. We'll set up a mock shelter. We will have folks here that will be able to show you exactly what happens when you check into a Red Cross shelter. And then on the following Thursday, which is the 24th of October, we'll have a panel where we have members who have been affected by the local disasters, and we have folks from the Red Cross, and we also have some first responders who will be there to talk about what happens when the community comes together to help those in need. So in closing, I'd like to say thank you for this honor, and we stand here to continue to serve in this city. Thank you very much.
And on behalf of the City of Thousand Oaks, you thanked us, and the City of Thousand Oaks, including all of its residents, want to say thank you to the Red Cross, and so this is for you, and then we're going to have Chief Spikerman come up and talk some more, and then we'll take a picture, so get makeup and all that stuff, and we'll be ready for it. Chief Spikerman, come on up.
Thank you, Mayor. City Councilmembers, for the audience, my name's John Spikerman. I'm the Fire Chief for the City of Thousand Oaks, and there's, we like every single month, but National Preparedness Month hits home for us, and it's one of our favorite months, and then it's in the weeks of October, we have Fire Prevention Week. So for us, we're always preparing, all the time, so when it comes to National Preparedness Month, we just try to focus on some of those things that we learned throughout the year. So I jotted a few things down, that what we're doing right now, some of the things that we're doing with the city and some of the things we're doing at the fire department. So currently today, because of our first real east wind and the relative humidities, we are in what's called a Plan One brush, so what that does is that means we augment our staffing, so we have additional resources on scene, resources available today throughout the county, some of our helicopters, our hand crews, bulldozers, and additional engines, as well as overhead staff. So that way, if we do have a fire, we could fill those positions that we need that are critical to make those decisions, develop strategies, and implement those tactics to try to get those fires out as soon as we possibly can so they don't get large. Throughout this season, we have weather briefings every single day, so some of those are just notes that we get sent to us on an email, and then on days like today, we actually have a conference call with different city staff and different organizations, fire departments throughout Ventura County, along with the United States Forest Service and CAL FIRE, and we talk about the weather, and we talk about what resources each one of our agencies has available for today. We also do what's called an operational area coordination call, where we talk to all the fire departments, including the naval base Ventura County, Auctionard City, Ventura City, CAL FIRE, the Forest Service, and LA County and LA City, as well as Santa Barbara and Kern County. So we all get on this telephone call, and we say, these are the resources that we have staffed up today. So that way, if Ventura County has a fire or the City of Thousand Oaks, we can immediately call LA County, Santa Barbara, our partners that surround us, and have those resources sent before they even go through what we call the ROSS system, which takes a little bit of time. So our neighboring partners, as well as us, will send those resources so we don't have to sit there and wait 45 minutes for somebody to travel. It just shortens that time. We have the ability, because we are a contract county with CAL FIRE, we get air resources quicker than everybody else. So right off the bat, whatever CAL FIRE gets on their fires and their different units, we also get that here, so we can immediately launch air tankers to our fires, and we actually had a fire today off Highway 33. We had two air tankers launched, and we ended up getting to cancel those because the fire didn't get big, so that was a benefit. We also, right now, are in partner with other contract counties, LA County, Orange County, Kern, Santa Barbara, and we have an aircraft in county right now at the Camrio Airport that any fire that ignites, that aircraft will be launched, and what it does is it maps the fire for us, it tells us the intensity of that fire, and it can map its direction so they can predict where it's going to be two or three hours from now, so that we can properly use those strategies and tactics to order evacuations, get people out of any of those congested areas. So that's right now in Ventura County, and it actually flew today as a test flight. Year-round, we monitor all the fuel moistures throughout the county also, so we can tell when they're at critical levels of ignition. Right now, they're just above those levels because of all the rain we had, that was just a benefit for us this year, but as those east winds come in, that's really...
Evening, everybody. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Madam Clerk, will you take the role?
Councilmember Bill De La Peña.
Present.
Councilmember Engler.
Present.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Mayor Protam Adam.
Here.
Mayor McCoy.
Present. No request for continuance, so I'll head over to the podium for special presentations. Turk County Chapter of the American Red Cross is going to bat leadoff, so Tony, come on up and get ready. The city of Thousand Oaks, like most cities in California, is vulnerable to numerous emergency situations such as earthquakes, wildfires, and floods. When such emergencies strike, as they did last year with the fires, our local chapter of the American Red Cross is always available to provide aid and support our residents. On a side note, and this is off script, but come on over here so I can see you, Tony, if you don't mind, went out to some of the evacuation centers. And the minute I got there, the Red Cross was already setting up. You guys were so instrumental in caring for the citizens of our community, and now I'm going to go back on script. In recognition of their local work in an effort to encourage everyone in Thousand Oaks to prepare for an emergency at home, at work, and at school, I'd like to proclaim September 2019 as National Emergency Preparedness Month. Mr. Briggs, it's time for you to accept this proclamation.
Alrighty.
Isn't that lovely?
It's very nice.
Look at that. I'm not going to read it because we'll be here forever, because you guys do so much stuff. Yeah, there's a lot of whereas. So I'm going to turn the speaker over to you, and you tell us about the Red Cross in this wonderful month.
Mayor, thank you. City council members and folks here, thank you so much. My name's Tony Briggs, and I have the privilege of leading the humanitarians here for the American Red Cross, and we are so thankful to be here. We live here, we work here, and we serve just like you do. Talking about the events from last year, it really did shake us to the core, from the shooting to the fires. It really did show us that we need to be prepared at all times. And with this being National Preparedness Month, there is no better time than right now to make sure that everyone in Thousand Oaks makes a kit, they have a plan, and they stay informed. One of the things that we do here is we train. Day in and day out, we have volunteers coming through our offices who do nothing but learn how to take care of people in the time that they have probably suffered the worst thing in their lives, whether that be a home fire, whether that be they're evacuated from their homes, or anything that basically causes someone to have an emergency. So at 2:00 in the morning, our volunteers are there to put a blanket around someone to tell them that we are here, and we're going to be here to see you through that struggle. So on behalf of the men and the women of the American Red Cross, we do thank you for noticing and taking the time to say thank you to everyone from the Red Cross who is a part of our preparedness. Something that we're doing here in Thousand Oaks is what we call our Shelter of Hope, and it allows us to tell our stories to the community. We'll have a Preparedness Fair here in Thousand Oaks at the street fair, and it'll be on October 20th, and we'll be here all day. We'll set up a mock shelter. We will have folks here that will be able to show you exactly what happens when you check into a Red Cross shelter. And then on the following Thursday, which is the 24th of October, we'll have a panel where we have members who have been affected by the local disasters, and we have folks from the Red Cross, and we also have some first responders who will be there to talk about what happens when the community comes together to help those in need. So in closing, I'd like to say thank you for this honor, and we stand here to continue to serve in this city. Thank you very much.
And on behalf of the city of Thousand Oaks, you thanked us, and the city of Thousand Oaks, including all of its residents, want to say thank you to the Red Cross. And so this is for you, and then we're going to have Chief Spikerman come up and talk some more, and then we'll take a picture. So get makeup and all that stuff, and we'll be ready for it. Chief Spikerman, come on up.
Thank you, Mayor. City council members. For the audience, my name's John Spikerman. I'm the Fire Chief for the city of Thousand Oaks. And there's, we like every single month, but National Preparedness Month, it hits home for us, and it's one of our favorite months, and then it's in the weeks of October, we have Fire Prevention Week. So for us, we're always preparing all the time. So when it comes to National Preparedness Month, we just try to focus on some of those things that we learned throughout the year. So, sorry, Mayor. So I jotted a few things down, that what we're doing right now, some of the things that we're doing with the city and some of the things we're doing at the Fire Department. So currently today, because of the, for our first real east wind and the relative humidities, we are in what's called a Plan One brush. So what that does is that means we augment our staffing. So we have additional resources on scene, our resources available today throughout the county, some of our helicopters, our hand crews, bulldozers, and additional engines, as well as overhead staff. So that way, if we do have a fire, we could fill those positions that we need that are critical to make those decisions, develop strategies, and implement those tactics to try to get those fires out as soon as we possibly can so they don't get large. Throughout this season, we have weather briefings every single day. So some of those are just notes that we get sent to us, like on an email. And then on days like today, we actually have a conference call with different city staff and different organizations, fire departments throughout Ventura County, along with the United States Forest Service and CAL FIRE, and we talk about the weather, and we talk about what resources each one of our agencies has available for today. We also do what's called an operational area coordination call, where we talk to all the fire departments, including the naval base Ventura County, Oxnard City, Ventura City, CAL FIRE, the Forest Service, and LA County and LA City, as well as Santa Barbara and Kern County. So we all get on this telephone call, and we say, these are the resources that we have staffed up today. So that way, if Ventura County has a fire or the city of Thousand Oaks, we can immediately call LA County, Santa Barbara, our partners that surround us, and have those resources sent before they even go through what we call the ROSS system, which takes a little bit of time. So our neighboring partners, as well as us, will send those resources so we don't have to sit there and wait 45 minutes for somebody to travel. It just shortens that time. We have the ability, because we are a contract county with CAL FIRE, we get air resources quicker than everybody else. So right off the bat, whatever CAL FIRE gets on their fires and their different units, we also get that here. So we can immediately launch air tankers to our fires, and we actually had a fire today off Highway 33. We had two air tankers launched, and we ended up getting to cancel those because the fire didn't get big. So that was a benefit. We also, right now, are in partner with other contract counties, LA County, Orange County, Kern, Santa Barbara, and we have an aircraft in county right now at the Camrio Airport that any fire that ignites, that aircraft will be launched, and what it does is it maps the fire for us. It tells us the intensity of that fire, and it can map its direction, so they can predict where it's going to be two or three hours from now, so that we can properly use those strategies and tactics to order evacuations, get people out of any of those congested areas. So that's right now in Ventura County, and it actually flew today as a test flight. Year-round, we monitor all the fuel moistures throughout the county also. So we can tell when they're at critical levels of ignition. Right now, they're just above those levels because of all the rain we had. That was just a benefit for us this year. But as those east winds come in, that's really low humidities with that warming air, will really drop those fuel moistures. So right now, we're still okay, but we're really close to that critical level. Our fire hazard reduction program, anybody who lives in that urban interface probably gets a weed abatement notice. Hopefully, it's not a hassle to everybody. Hopefully, you enjoy cutting all your weeds and trimming brush. But it is really critical for us. What it does is it gives us that, it gives homeowners a defensible space for their property. It gives firefighters an opportunity to work in a safer environment, and gives us that opportunity to really be successful and protect your properties when I have to send firefighters into those areas. Recently, really recently, like this week, city staff, police, and fire all met to discuss some of those lessons that we learned during the Woolsey and the Hill fire, and are prepping for what was, we had a Green Meadow fire here back in 1993. So we're looking at that. Those fuel models are really thick. If you look up in the hills right now, those fuels haven't burned for over 20 years, and so that's a target area. So we're looking at those areas. If we have an east wind fire, we're ready. We're planning for making sure our water tanks are full, we have evacuation areas scheduled, or be able to pick evacuation zones that are realistic, so we're not evacuating people that don't have to be evacuated, looking at escape routes for citizens, as well as planning out shelters depending on where those fires may start, so we can put people in safe environments. Also, everybody's heard of the Southern California Edison power shut-off, their plan. So that is what we're all trying to do. We're trying to be prepared for that. Right now, for this wind event, Southern California Edison hasn't, has not planned to shut off any power in Ventura County. But that doesn't mean if a fire starts that it will not damage that infrastructure. So we need to be prepared. It could be an earthquake, it could be a fire, anything can damage that, and if we lose power, you just need to make sure that you're prepared. And then it's always communication, so we're always trying to better our communication with other first responders, our operational area, the city and the county, so that we can report that information, and also reporting that information to what's most important to us, and that's you, the citizens of the Thousand Oaks area, because we want to put out that timely, accurate information that you can trust, not stuff that's being sent on different people's Twitter's account. We want to make sure you have a good source, so you can look that source up. It's a trusted source that you, so that you can take action. So some of those sites that you can look at are the Thousand Oaks City site, their website, as well as vcfd.org, and that information that you can get from there is trusted, and then you can take appropriate action. So that's about what I have to say tonight. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Tony, if you would introduce the two fellows that are with you, and while you're doing that, Chief Spikerman, great insights, lot of points. Had you gone a little bit longer, I would have called the Red Cross for cots, but come on up.
I have Scott O'Connell, who's our Regional Disaster Officer, and Ethan Walker, who's our Preparedness Manager for the region. And also with us is, as everyone already knows, Sue is here with us, and she is our Recovery Lead, and she's absolutely amazing. Without folks like this, we could not do what we do every single day, so I thank you guys for what you guys do.
Let's take a picture. Two more to go. I'd like to introduce David Maron from the Ventura County Civic Alliance to present the State of the Region Report. He's doing that on behalf of the Ventura County Civic Alliance, but he is also the best moderator for debates in the city. So David, come on up, man.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff, and members of the audience, I'm David Maron with the Ventura County Civic Alliance. For those who are not familiar with the Alliance, it's a regional organization. We try to look at things in a neutral manner across the county. We have 10 cities, but as far as a regional group that looks at the quality of life here in Ventura County to continue that quality of life for our children and grandchildren. So that's our mission, and tonight I'm sharing with you the report that we produce every two years. This report is researched by the folks over at Calhoun University, Dr. Jamshi Demui and his team, and we look at indicators across the county. So we could not produce this report and distribute it without the support of our sponsors, and just a few of them, the Ventura County Community Foundation, the Ventura County Community College District, and these other businesses, ERA, AT&amp;T, the two universities, also Limoneira, Haas, Montecito Bank, and the County of Ventura. So one of the things I'd like to point out, I know it's way too small for any of you to see, but when you look at this later, we have a page called Key Statistics, and one of the takeaways from there is that Ventura County is getting older. In 2000, we were about 35 is the average age, but in 2017, we're up to 37.2. We continue to get older, and that is a problem for long-term policymakers like you. On this page, we also break down the average, the number of children under 18 and the number of adults over 65 in each of the cities, so you can compare. I know that here in the Caneo Valley, agriculture isn't a big thing, so I'll just highlight one quick slide. Strawberries are king in Ventura County. It's about $650 million, and agriculture alone is $2 billion industry in Ventura County, about 5% of our GDP. So still a major, important resource. As far as you all being politicians, I thought I'd share with you the registration statistics. For those, I know it's hard to read, but the blue represents Democrats, red is Republicans, and green is the no-party preference. This chart is the Ventura County, and you can see that over the last 15, 20 years, Democrats have held about the same, but the no-party preference has become the party that most people are registering with, and the Republicans are losing because of that. In individual cities, we have some cities like Oxnard that are predominantly Democratic. Simi Valley leads the county as far as the most Republicans registered, and you can certainly read all of these statistics in there. One of the other things that's not here is the number of people that are voting absentee now has just skyrocketed. More people vote absentee today than go to the polls. So for those of you politicians, that certainly changes the dynamic when you're running for office. Like to also mention that nonprofit revenues, Ventura County, we have a lot of philanthropy. Certainly, we saw that after Borderline and the Woolsey fire, people opening their purses. But we are below other counties, so places like Los Angeles, Santa Barbara, even the state overall. So on this chart, purple on the bottom is Ventura County, the average giving per person, and you can see that state of California is gold and above that. So we're not meeting other counties who are more prolific in their giving. From the economy perspective, one of the great points of data here is unemployment rate. That purple down there gets to about 3.8%. This is the lowest unemployment rate we've seen in a generation, maybe much longer than that. That's great news, that most people, anybody really, who can get up in the morning, wants a job, can find one. It may not be the one you want, but there are jobs out there. The problem in Ventura County, though, is we are creating low-paying jobs, not the high-paying manufacturing, financial services, those types of jobs. We are not creating those. On the left side are the goods-producing jobs, things like manufacturing, construction. We've included in the chart the actual pre-recession numbers, and in things like construction, we haven't even come back to where we were pre-recession. Where we are creating jobs is in things like leisure and hospitality. That's great, they're entry-level jobs, people can get a start, but they don't pay as well. And when you think of the high cost of living here in Ventura County, this is a long-term problem, and I spoke about this probably the last time I was here. This is something where we love it when Amgen, Baxter, those companies come, and when they cut back on the number of workers, it really hurts Ventura County. So if you're a young person, you're trying to find a job, you can find one, but it may not be at the salary you need to go out and get an apartment where you live alone. The green line in here is the inflation-adjusted gross county product. So this represents all of the economy here in Ventura County, and it's pretty much flat. When we go back to 2000, the big dip happened around 2008, 2010, but then when we started to come out of the Great Recession, we stayed level. Our economy has not really grown over the last six, eight years, but Ventura, well, the state of California, the nation, we keep hearing about this great growth in the economy. But Ventura County has a challenge here. Why that's not happening? Many would say it's because of what I just said, that the jobs are not here. We're not creating the higher-paying jobs. It's too expensive to live. People complain about being on the freeways too long. So this is something, if we're in a great economy and we're just barely holding our heads above water, we could have serious problems when things get worse. I know that the city council doesn't really deal with education, but I wanted to bring important numbers to you. So the top line there, I believe, is the K through 8 grades, and the green on the bottom is the high schools, 9 through 12. And what this shows is the enrollment in the schools is declining and projected. So that purple line is where, demarks where we have projection going to the right. So long-term, we are looking at a decline in students in our schools. That ties back to how I mentioned earlier, the average age in Ventura County is getting older, and we don't all want to get old and not have somebody young to come take care of us when we need it. So how does that translate? These are the numbers for the Caneo Valley School District, and there's no way I can read that, but I think you see something like about a 4,000 drop, maybe it's greater. So the top line was, I believe, four, six years ago, and then it's gone down the last year. That is significant to see that kind of decline, Caneo Valley. Now, some may say, oh, it's the kids want to go play football at Oak Park or do something like that, but it's not enough. The decline that we're seeing in enrollment means that there can be school closures coming, challenges, layoffs in the schools around the county. In the west part of the county, we are seeing growth in some of the school districts like Oxnard Union High School, Santa Paula, but on this side of the grade, Simi Valley, Moore Park also declining. So long-term consequence. Okay, the things that the city council can do something about. In Ventura County, the average apartment rent for a two-bedroom apartment is now over $2,000. It's a staggeringly high number, and many of us in this room who bought our first home decades ago remembers when that wasn't even the amount of the mortgage, and today to buy a, just to rent an apartment. So the lower line, the one that's dipping down in the upper chart, that's vacancy rate. And this is why we're seeing such high rents, is because we have such low vacancy. We're not building enough apartments, so apartment owners are in the driver's seat. And below that is the average rent in various cities. Thousand Oaks skews towards the high end as far as rent, and so that also has consequences if you get out of school, you're fortunate enough to get a job here, maybe with the city, but maybe it doesn't pay well when you start off, so you decide to live in Santa Paula, where it's a lot cheaper. Now you're on the road every morning, you're away from your family, and we're clogging up the freeways. So all of these things are interconnected. Median home price continues to grow. We have numbers there as far as the different cities for you. Housing affordability, as compared to some other counties like San Bernardino and Riverside, it's less affordable to live here, but we are better than, I believe, LA and Orange County. As far as Ventura County, it's a wonderful place to live. I'm sure most of us would love to retire here. Some of the great things, we have increased solar use, our beaches are very clean, our air is cleaner. This is average water use in Ventura County, and Thousand Oaks skews towards the higher end as far as amount of water used per person. Other cities are lower. Usually tends to do with the coastal cities, Oxnard, Port Waynimi, they are not as hot, so they don't use as much water for watering lawns, things like that. Public health, so the state of California now does some studies of 11th graders and asks them how much they use different substances, marijuana, vaping, things like that. So we are seeing that nicotine use is very low. That's great, we're seeing our kids stay away from that, but we are seeing other things as far as substance abuse. Should have brought a book for me. So this one, I believe, is the e-cigarettes or vaping, and it might also be marijuana. Okay, this is the e-cigarettes, I think. So we're seeing that in some of the school districts, typically the wealthier school districts, higher numbers of students are doing the vaping. I guess it's expensive. Thank you very much. Okay. But we're seeing this in some of the other areas, alcohol abuse, the number of kids that are drinking. We're also seeing sadness, chronic sadness. A lot of our kids are sad, that's measured, and also even suicide. We're seeing over 10% of students have seriously contemplated suicide. This chart shows the opioid crisis, so opioids are both legal and illegal drugs, prescriptions as such, and this shows different counties in California, and Ventura County is the highest one there, the green. 85 deaths in 2017 from opioids, so it is a continuing public health crisis here in Ventura County. Public safety, Ventura County is still one of the safest counties in the state. These are the top 15 counties. Ventura County is the second safest. And as far as the individual cities, Thousand Oaks is still good, but Moore Park, I think, always leads the rest. Oxnard, Ventura have the highest crime rates. Homelessness is growing, you're all aware of that. We have homelessness by city. You can compare how you're doing with some of the other cities, but that is going to be a big problem. Transportation, we have a lot of stats in there. I won't, I'll try to wrap this up, but we still have a lot of people who are driving by themselves to work, not commuting, not carpooling, that type of thing. So continues to be a challenge. And the chief mentioned wildfire. We have data in here about the Thomas Fire versus the Woolsey Fire. I think Thomas Fire was about $1.4 billion of damages to Ventura County. Woolsey was about $370 million, but that's only Ventura County. It was huge in the county of Los Angeles. So a lot of great data. We thank you very much. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you to the staff for helping to arrange this, and we're, I'd like to also mention that this is available online. Anyone that's interested, you can visit the Civic Alliance website. It's civicalliance.org. You can download it for free. Thank you very much to the council.
Any questions from the council? I'm not near the board, so I can't see.
I don't have any questions, but thank you so much for this excellent report. I mean, we're dealing with many of the issues, homelessness, for example, and school districts. So thank you very much for providing us with this information. It's going to be very helpful.
All right, one more to go. So now I'm going to invite Rick Schrader. He's the president of Manny Mansions, and this is celebrating 40 years in the Caneo Valley, right here in the city of Thousand Oaks. And on behalf of the entire city council, I'm going to present you, Rick, with this commendation, and then I'm going to ask you to share a little bit. And I just have to tell you, it was great being with you, doing the TO talks, and being at the event, celebrating this. So let's do this. Boom. All right. We'll take a picture a little bit. Go ahead and share.
Well, thank you, Mayor McCoy, and members of the city council, and members of the city staff. I am Rick Schrader, president of Manny Mansions, and thank you for your kind words. You know, it's quite an achievement for Manny Mansions to celebrate its 40-year anniversary. It was in the spring of 1979, under the prodding of Frank Shillow, that local residents, businesses, social service agencies, faith-based organizations, city staff members, and even members of the city council gathered to discuss what they could do to assist others in the community who were in need of affordable housing. And it's out of those series of meetings that they had that Manny Mansions was formed. And during these past 40 years, Manny Mansions has indeed served the community in its affordable housing needs. We develop, own, and manage affordable housing communities throughout the Caneo Valley, Ventura County, and now into Los Angeles County as well. With the opening up of Ormond Beach Villas, Ventura County's first affordable housing exclusively for veterans and their families, Manny Mansions will have developed 17 affordable housing communities with close to 600 units of dedicated affordable housing. And indeed, Manny Mansions is the largest provider of affordable housing in the city of Thousand Oaks, with nine affordable housing communities of 456 units. But really, what distinguishes Manny Mansions is that we also provide onsite life-enriching services for our residents, our resident children, our adults, our families, our residents who have experienced homelessness. We believe that everyone should have the opportunity for quality housing and life-enriching services. Our programs are designed to meet the needs of the residents as they try to increase their self-sufficiency. self-sufficiency and quality of life. We want to break the cycle of poverty to give our residents a hand up, not a hand out. But I want to thank the city of Thousand Oaks. You know, during these past 40 years, the city of Thousand Oaks has been a very strong partner in affordable housing and for Many Mansions, beginning with our partnership in the mid-1980s in developing Shillow Gardens apartments, to the city's financing of close to $20 million in our affordable housing projects in Thousand Oaks, to granting over $2 million in improvements. The city has always supported our mission and our desire to assist those in the community most in need. And as a community, we do face enormous challenges concerning housing, housing which is high quality, housing which is well-maintained, housing which is safe, and housing which is affordable. There is simply a shortage of affordable housing in Thousand Oaks, the Caneo Valley, and Ventura County, and I think the Civic Alliance report amply demonstrates that. And indeed, at the recent housing forum, which was hosted by Mayor McCoy and Council Member Bill de la Peña, the lack of affordable housing was cited as a leading cause of homelessness. Well, I stand here to tell you that we, as an organization, are ready to serve the community in its housing needs, as we have done for the past 40 years. And we will continue to work very closely with the city and its residents on our shared housing goals. So on behalf of Many Mansions, its Board of Directors, its many staff members here today, and our more than 1,300 residents, we thank you.
You want to take the picture with your staff, too?
I do.
Let's have the staff come on down, we'll take a picture with the council. Rick, you can hold that.
I will.
That's it, right? My name's on the chair.
Oh, your name? Yeah, I know. We don't, we don't take up many letters, do we?
Madam Clerk, if you'll announce public comments.
This is a time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole, and all documents for city council and the official record should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the council unless listed on the agenda, but may be referred to the city manager for administrative follow-up. Three individuals have presented cards, and pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed five minutes, and the yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
All right, well, I had the privilege to meet all three of these speakers. And Shannon, you're batting leadoff, so come on up. They don't have your last name, so if you'd share that and your city residence.
Yeah, Shannon Bitzer, and I live in Torzana. So first of all, I'd like to introduce myself. I am Shannon Bitzer. I am a father, a veteran of the United States Marine Corps, and an entrepreneur in the Los Angeles region. In 2016, I started a cannabis delivery company. I did this despite my personal disinterest in cannabis usage. Ironically, I'm actually allergic, so I'm probably one of the few people in the industry who doesn't ingest cannabis. But I did start the company with an interest in the application of cannabis for medical purposes. A year after starting up my company, we were awarded the title of LA's Best Cannabis Delivery Service. Our company's growth since then has been exponential. This is the result of top-notch customer service and efficient logistical applications. Here's the problem I'm dealing with now, though. LA's city government is too inefficient and incompetent to run a cannabis regulatory department effectively. LA has high taxes, high crime, and due to zoning, our office is in Van Nuys, where crime is a persistent worry for us. I'm tired of giving my hard-earned tax dollars to a city that seems to have little care for small business owners and the middle class. In the city of Thousand Oaks, the municipal code now allows two dispensaries, if I'm not mistaken, I don't know if it's two or three. Why not allow a delivery service? Unlike a dispensary, we are out of the view of the public. The BCC regulations for delivery require we be a non-storefront retail location, which means no one except for employees are allowed onsite. We would be out of the public's view, yet the city would reap the benefits of collecting taxes from us. It's a win-win for both of us. All I'm asking is for permission to rent a type-C commercial, non-storefront office space within city limits of Thousand Oaks. My company can bring in hundreds of thousands of dollars for tax revenue into the local community every year, so why pass up this opportunity? Let me help the great city of Thousand Oaks by bringing value to this community. This is a family-oriented city, and I share such values as a father. I share these values with, the same as the people of Thousand Oaks. Please consider changing the municipal code to allow for a delivery service to be based within city limits. You'd be helping a family, a company of great people, and the citizens of Thousand Oaks. Thank you for listening to me, and have a great evening.
Thank you. Zuby, you're up next, Zuby Olin.
I'm a little short, so I'm going to put this down. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for having me today. I am here on behalf of the federal government. I work for the United States Department of Commerce, the Bureau of the Census, and I am your census rep for the county for this next year. And my job is pretty awesome. You get to tell me my schedule every week. I am basically here to be your cheerleader for the census and to visit schools, hospitals, government official buildings, fire stations, police stations, you name it. I will come to you and briefly, for about 10, 15 minutes, talk about how awesome the census is, why it matters that everyone gets counted, and we all know that's money, right, in our pocket every year for 10 years straight. And I can answer any questions that you have regarding the census, the counts, and hard-to-reach areas within the county. I also cover Santa Barbara and Slow Counties as well, so I live in my car. But it's a pretty awesome job, and I'd love to have you guys invite me in to chat about the census. I can be reached on my government phone at 805-895-9781, and the city manager's office also has my email and phone number, again, if you didn't get that. And I can also be reached via LinkedIn. So again, make my schedule fun, let's get together and chat about the census. The great thing about our bureau is that we're blind, we do not see race, gender, political affiliation, anything. We're just here to count everyone, no matter what. So that's what makes this job fun as well. So thank you for having me, and I hope to see you guys soon.
Thanks, Zuby. And Mateo, you're up next.
Hey, guys, I'm Mateo Freeman. I live in Simi Valley, and thank you for having me. Hello, city council and citizens of Thousand Oaks. My name is Mateo, and I am in the middle stages of a cannabis delivery license for the city of Los Angeles, and I have been for over a year and a half. The city of Los Angeles is missing out on a huge opportunity right now, and where they're failing, the city of Thousand Oaks can capitalize. I applaud the city for taking such steps towards bringing money into the city by means of the legal cannabis market. The cannabis delivery market has the potential to bring the city of Thousand Oaks millions of dollars every year, millions of dollars that can be well-spent within this city, which draws my concern to how the city is actually going to enforce tax laws on deliveries outside of the city of Thousand Oaks. How do you manage those people from coming in? Yeah, they can just go off the internet, and they're still going to be delivering here. What I would like to propose is the city, like the city of Port Juanaime, may be authorized two or three, maybe five, as many, maybe a no-cap system, delivery companies that are out of the public eye to set up their office here and operate quietly. You still get all the tax revenue, kind of like what Shannon said, with none of the visibility, none of the negative outlook that cannabis sometimes draws. There are people like me, Shannon, tons of people who are begging just for a city like Port Juanaime's doing, to open up a license process for people like us to come get licensed easily, set up shop, we're responsible, loving owners that would just love to see the city flourish. And we want to work with the city. To my understanding, I don't think a lot of city members know how the business operates. We're still in the process of getting licensed, but we'd love to sit down and really explain how it operates and why, how it can be beneficial to the city, and we can really work together, and we can, like, make the city so good. And that's all I have to say.
Thanks, Mateo.
Thanks, guys.
All right, consent calendar. Oh, wait, my bad. Follow-up, city manager, he's got something to say.
Just a quick thanks to our representative from the census for coming. The city is really happy to be a participant through VCCF in the census process this year, and a number of staff from our organization are assisting with that effort. In regards to the two gentlemen that spoke on cannabis, Patrick Hehur, who's coming down the stairs right now, is our point person, be happy to chat with you in the lobby with a little bit more detail, and talk about the process. And just a reminder to the council and to the public, based on the Bureau of Cannabis Control's changes, delivery is allowed on a statewide basis now. What the two gentlemen we're speaking to tonight were actually setting up a commercial operation from which to deliver from within the area, which is essentially a dispensary without a walk-in capability. So that, that action would take some, some additional consideration by the council, which may occur in the future, but Patrick will speak to those gentlemen about that. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. Now we'll come to the consent calendar. Do we have a motion or anything the council would desire to pull? Councilmember Bill de la Peña?
I'd like to move the consent calendar all the way through, but I think there is a reading for 7H. Okay, so move to approve.
Prepare the vote.
The motion passes 5-0, and your ordinance title is an ordinance amending Thousand Oaks municipal code to add or modify sections 9-4.202, 9-4.1601, 9-4.2105, and 9-4.2402 to define biotechnology and similar uses as technology and life sciences. Add technology and life sciences to the list of uses allowed in industrial park M1 zone and establish parking standards for technology and life science uses, MCA 2019-70572, and ordinance number 1664-NS.
Thank you. And that brings us to item nine, department reports. Dr. Helen Cox, will you want to take over?
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. I'm here this evening to provide an update on the Sustainability Strategic Plan, and I'm joined on the dais by Cliff Finley, Deputy Director, and soon-to-be Director of Public Works, and Mark Towne, Director of Community Development. Commitment to environmental leadership and developing a climate action plan were among the top 10 guiding principles arising out of the city's Visioning 2064 process that took place in 2014. In addition, council has set the development of this strategic plan as well as one of its top 10 priorities for this fiscal year. The Sustainability Strategic Plan provides a comprehensive roadmap that addresses resource use, waste, and emissions for municipal operations and for the city. The plan for municipal operations, which council adopted last year, provides the foundation for this by addressing resource use from city operations and facilities. The strategic plan incorporates this and additional components to address sustainability citywide. I'll take a few minutes to walk through the five components of this plan, which are greenhouse gases, energy, transportation, water, and waste, and I'll provide a brief summary and status update for each. California's landmark AB 32, or otherwise known as the Global Warming Solutions Act from 2006, and follow-up legislation from 2016, established a limit for the state's greenhouse gas emissions at 40% below 1990 levels by 2030, and 80% below by 2050. The city may elect to adopt these targets, or can set its own targets in its climate action plan. The first step in this process is to calculate our current and historical emissions. This process is currently underway and will be completed this year. With regard to energy, earlier this year, an energy information system was implemented to monitor and track energy use at city facilities, and last month, the council adopted a municipal energy action plan to reduce that use by 15% over the next five years. A master plan for Hill Canyon Treatment Plant is almost complete and will include recommendations for overhauling energy production at that site. A citywide energy plan which incorporates community-wide energy strategies is under development, with expected completion by the end of this fiscal year. On transportation, council adopted the purchase and installation of 11 new electric vehicle charging stations earlier this year, and stations will be installed beginning this week. We're now developing a plan for increasing the number of EV charging stations over the next few years, subject to the availability of funding. As more alternative fuel vehicles become available and the range of electric vehicles increases, we'll look towards adopting these into our own fleet. We're looking at replacing the next two retired vehicles with all-electric Chevy Bolts. Moving on to water, this year, the city joined the California Data Collaborative, which provides data analysis services to water agencies throughout the state. Our agency data is currently being exported into the system, which provides functionality to help us prepare for the new state mandates in which agency water allocations will be established, comprising a population-based indoor allowance and an irrigated area-based For the waste component, the city's current solid waste contract is scheduled to expire at the end of 2021. We're currently in negotiations with our franchise waste haulers on a revised contract that incorporates the state's new recycling and organics provisions. A recommendation regarding that will be brought to council later this year. In addition, we'll be revising our solid waste ordinance to incorporate the state's new recycling requirements. A climate action plan will be developed over the next 18 months based on these inputs. We expect outreach to start at the beginning of next year. That concludes my presentation. We're here to receive your input and answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cox. Mayor Protem, Adam?
provides data analysis services to water agencies throughout the state. Our agency data is currently being exported into the system, which provides functionality to help us prepare for the new state mandates in which agency water allocations will be established, comprising a population-based indoor allowance and an irrigated area-based exterior allowance. For the waste component, the city's current solid waste contract is scheduled to expire at the end of 2021. We're currently in negotiations with our franchise waste haulers on a revised contract that incorporates the state's new recycling and organics provisions. A recommendation regarding that will be brought to council later this year. In addition, we'll be revising our solid waste ordinance to incorporate the state's new recycling requirements. A climate action plan will be developed over the next 18 months based on these inputs. We expect outreach to start at the beginning of next year. That concludes my presentation. We're here to receive your input and answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cox. Mayor Protem Adam?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Dr. Cox, for the report. You know, as long as I've been here, the city of Thousand Oaks has been a very environmentally conscious city. We've stopped sprawling, we don't do that anymore. We're looking inward to build so we can work and live in the same spot, stay off the freeways, keep the greenhouse gases down. We have Hill Canyon Treatment Plant, 100% sustainable, biomass and solar, strict oak tree ordinance, 15,000 acres of open space, I mean, the list goes on and on. Our fleet's CNG, electric and hydrogen, you know, we're really conscious about being in good environmental stewards. We're launching an energy campaign to save 15% city usage. We're even drilling for groundwater so we can get off the imported water business as much as possible. There's another direction I'd like to see us go, I'd like to suggest, and added to, probably would be added to the waste component portion of the climate action plan, and that would be to look at phasing out these single-use plastics that we've been hearing so much about, particularly polystyrene and styrofoam. Those would probably be the two worst culprits. Not biodegradable, not compostable. We're in a recycling crisis right now. China's not taking our recyclables, recyclable goods anymore, so we have a real problem with that. We're producing millions and tons of this stuff, and we're recycling a very small percentage of it. And, and you know where it ends up. It's ending up in our, in our oceans. There's estimated, I looked this up, there's five trillion pieces of plastic in the ocean right now, in little tiny bits. You've all heard about the Pacific Geyer, the garbage bin out there in the middle of the Pacific, that's where it's all ending up. So I, and these microplastics, they end up in our water, in our, in our, the fish that we eat. It's estimated, I wrote this down, we, about 18 billion pounds of plastic each year end up in the ocean. 18 billion pounds. And now that we're cut down on recycling, we're pushing more and more into the landfills, and it's not, it's not degrading. It's just sitting there. Some people estimate for hundreds, if not thousands, even a million years. You know, the pyramids are only 5,000 years old, and we're leaving a legacy that could be around for, you know, who knows how long. I mean, they've detected this stuff in the Santa Barbara Channel, they've detect, get this, they've detected it in the Marianas Trench, which is seven miles down in the Pacific Ocean. They've detected it in Lake Tahoe, which is supposed to be a pristine, clear lake, little, little molecules of plastic floating around in Lake Tahoe. So what I'm getting at, I want to include this in our climate action plan to try to phase these types of products out over time. We don't have to do anything, you know, immediately, but I think it makes a lot of sense. I know the state of California has so far stalled on a bill to get this done, they're going to look at it again in February, but there's cities like Solana Beach, there's cities like Burbank, there's states like Maine and Maryland that have, that have proceeded on, on this path, and I think Thousand Oaks should follow. Here's one of the worst culprits right here. You've all seen the clamshell box that you get, right? This will be around for a long time, long time. It just breaks into little tiny pieces and blows out into the atmosphere and, and ends up where it shouldn't. And it's not like, it's not like there aren't alternatives. Now, here's a, here's a compostable box. Simple, you put it in the landfill and it's gone in a couple of months. Here's, here's a, look at the stuff I have. Here's a, here's a fork. Looks like it's plastic, right? Oh, no, it's cornstarch. A cornstarch fork, it's nice and solid, works good, but it'll, it'll compost.
You could eat it?
You could, you may be able to eat it. Councilmember Jones, I wouldn't advise it, but, and you know, the wooden straw, the wooden sticks instead of the plastic, you've all heard about the straws, right? But the one I'm particularly concerned about is this polystyrene, this styrofoam, that stuff just won't go away, just won't go away. So if, the moral of the story, if we can reduce the stuff at the source, we can then, and the front end, then we don't have to worry about the waste on the back end. So we've got to work on that side of it. We'll save millions of dollars, because right now, we're paying to recycle our waste, we're paying. It's costing us. We used to be able to sell it, they don't want it anymore. So this is one way that we can actually save a little bit of money and be good for the environment at the same time, so. That's what I like us to look at, and I'm sure that when you come back to us, you could have some recommendations. Thanks, Dr. Cox.
Mayor Protem, that was a really good show and tell.
I think we ought to give him a hand.
Yeah. Councilmember Angler, can you top that?
I just had a small question.
All right.
In terms of, in terms of the recyclables and the, the people who are using that as sort of a cottage industry and bringing it to locations within the city, apparently we've lost the locations where people can actually bring recyclables and get their cash. Can you explain how people now are supposed to handle that and continue doing what they're doing in recycling?
So, yeah, the, the city lost its, the business Replanet, which was licensed here to redeem the California redemption value of the CRV containers and give the cash back. That business went, closed down its doors a couple of months ago. And so currently, there are other state licensed entities that will do that. They're not located within the city, there are Simi Valley, Camarillo, but within the city right now, there are just a number of supermarkets that are authorized and in fact required by the state to accept those materials. So on our website, we have a list, I think there's about a dozen supermarkets within the city where people can take their CRV items and get redemption. It doesn't matter whether you bought the item there or wherever you bought it, you're allowed to redeem it at any of those, those places. So that's what's happening now, and as I said, we, we have that list published. In addition, the state will be, the program's managed by the state by CalRecycle, and they will be requiring new centers to be set up that serve the areas that were previously served by Replanet, but unfortunately, that process takes some time, those entities have to be notified, they have a chance to decide to do their own recycling, or they can contribute and bring in a new center. So, and all that process is probably going to take six to nine months before those centers are replaced with new ones, but in the meantime, people can either go to centers outside the city or use the supermarkets that are listed.
In terms of water conservation, does the city still participate with the Wreck and Parks District to provide composting and, and some type of items to be able to spread on your, your lawns and everything?
So the city still has a site up by the Thousand Oaks Library Complex in that parking lot where they take the, the tree, the chipped mulch, and where residents can go to that and load up their own vehicles for free and have access to that free mulch material.
Thank you, Dr. Cox.
Councilmember Bill LaPena?
Thank you, Mayor McCoy. From plastics to recyclables to bees, I want to talk about bees tonight, actually. We know that many California crops rely on bees for their crops, and we also know that climate change has an effect on bees, their habitat, and California is also the second largest producer, second largest producer of honey in the country. So with that in mind, I was hoping we could look at our ordinance and see whether beekeeping would be allowed in, on properties that are not necessarily only three acres, but smaller properties in the RAPD zones, for example.
I'll defer to Mr. Towne to take that question.
Thank you, Dr. Cox, and good evening, City Council. As Councilmember Bill LaPena mentioned, beehives are allowed in one zone in the city, in our rural agricultural zone, which frankly is pretty limited in terms of its, its extent. And beehives are allowed within that, that zone, also subject to certain conditions, like setbacks from public roads and from, from habitable dwellings. We did do, recently, did a survey, conducted a survey of other Southern California cities as this topic has come up from time to time, and looked at, at 10 other cities, and all of them had some type of sort of comparable restrictions, minimum lot size, setback requirements, et cetera, and often a zoning designation-based approach. In thinking about it, I would suggest that we debate this, talk about this, and, and include it in our general plan update, because one of the chapters in our general plan is the conservation element, which includes wildlife resources and plant habitats, that would be the appropriate place to, to include such, such a discussion. But it's clear that many other cities are allowing beehives, but always subject to some type of reasonable restrictions.
Now, certainly, it's, would be wonderful to have it as part of our general plan discussion. I'm just thinking, the general plan itself will take probably about two and a half years, and I'm not sure, with bees dying off and bees being necessary, and climate change only getting worse, not better, if you listened to the United Nations presentations recently, so is there any way that perhaps we could get a head start on, on that discussion?
Absolutely. So that's the, sort of the, the most broad basis for that discussion, but if it is the council's pleasure, staff can bring back an analysis of the topic. And another avenue is a municipal code amendment that is more focused, that looks specifically at that, that topic, apart from the general plan update, through a municipal code amendment. So that's another option, but if it's the council's pleasure, if it is the council's pleasure, we can certainly bring back additional information on the topic.
So if I might just chime in really quickly here, so we've had two sort of items relating to sustainability, one that's more land use oriented and one that's more dovetails into the waste hauler piece. So we have a current track that's in place, and Dr. Cox, correct me if I'm wrong, a current track that we are moving towards in regards to our waste hauler agreement, and the, the piece brought forward by Mayor Protem Adam has a nexus sort of tied into that, so I'd anticipate that we have a pathway already to do that. So if it's the council's pleasure on that item, that'll, that would be the path on that piece. The second would be on the bees, I would ask that we just, you give staff an opportunity, we've got a lot of balls in the air right now as it relates to the general plan and campus master plan and other things, to come up with a timeframe that's reasonable and come back to the council with, with something regarding that as well. As Mr. Towne mentioned, we have done some preliminary analysis as the, the topic has been buzzed about a little bit here and there, and so we, we have some background knowledge on it, as he mentioned, almost every city has some regulations around that, and just to remind the council, there are reasons for those regulations, including people with allergies to bees and other things like that, and ensuring that there's some restrictions put in place. So we could certainly research that and bring it back to the council, but just wanted to give you a sense of the tracks for those various things, if it's the council's pleasure.
Thank you, and my apologies, I didn't bring a beehive tonight for presentation, so I could have done that.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Jones?
Yeah, just quickly, I'd like to say, Dr. Cox, I really like your opening statement about the strategic plan, that it's environmentally friendly, fiscally responsible, and sustainability-minded. I love that claim for our city operations. Just a quick question about these different colored boxes. The orange, of course, are in the process, the blues have yet to be started. Do you have any handle on completion of all of this, or is that too nebulous right now?
We're looking at about an 18-month timeline for the actual climate action plan. The other elements, sorry, I've kind of moved on to the next person's.
Well, that, since you haven't started that one, I presume the others will be even quicker, the ones that are in the orange that you're already in the process of doing, is that logical?
So, most of the orange ones should be completed in the next six months.
I see.
The exception is probably the community energy plan, which is probably more like nine months or so, but most of them should be done at, at least by the end of this fiscal year, if not before. And then the ones in blue there, the, that feed directly into that climate action plan will be developed in concert with that plan over the next 18 months.
Okay, thank you. Well, this has been very enlightening, and I'm glad that my colleagues are so well-versed in plastics and bees. It was really educational for me to have this exercise, so thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Dr. Cox, I'd just add, I'm in agreement with Mayor Protem Adam, taking care of this on the front end, shipping all of our recyclables to China, which, depending on what statistics you read, they, their carbon dioxide emission exceeds that of America and the EU combined, so I'm not sure that they're doing proper justice with whatever we've sent them, and I think if we address the problem here, I think those are really good examples, though I seem to have made light of your show and tell, I found it very impressive, Mayor Protem. So thank you, Dr. Cox, great presentation. Did, yeah, you want to make a motion? You were up there.
Do we need to make a motion on this, or can we just provide direction?
Feedback.
Okay.
We're good.
Then, and, so bees, plastics, and recycling, okay?
And I like your bee idea.
Thanks.
Yeah. Thank you again. That brings us to item 9B. Patrick Heer, Assistant City Attorney, what, did I do something wrong? 9B, oh, I got you, yeah.
9B.
Buzz with humor. So, yeah, I did, I planned it that way.
Be good.
Patrick, come on up. And we have some public speakers tonight in relation to that.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. We're here tonight to consider adoption of an interim ordinance declaring a moratorium on new industrial hemp businesses in Thousand Oaks. So why a moratorium at this time? First, I want to make a statement that, you know, the city is certainly pro-business, but at this time, the, the recommendation is to slow down on land use approvals regarding hemp businesses with a moratorium while we get some research and analysis completed. Now, there's been a big public interest in, for purported health benefits of CBD from industrial hemp. It's stirred a whole new market segment for supplements and lotions and possible food products, but the, the commercial effort to cultivate and harvest and manufacture hemp from such products has tremendously, tremendously outpaced both federal and state regulations. And frankly, the city does not have any specific regulations regarding hemp as well. So, to give you some background again, I know we discussed it briefly at the last city council meeting, but hemp and cannabis plants are nearly identical. Hemp, I think the biggest concern we have with hemp, or the, the change that you would note, is that hemp has less than 0.3 or 0.3% of THC or less. THC is a psychoactive component normally associated with cannabis. I would like you to note the photo and to the right in the screen, this is a hemp field in Ventura County. You will note that they write industrial hemp, no THC, and no trespassing, of course, and I think they do that, and I, I didn't talk to the owner of this field, but I, I'm sure it's to, to distinguish it from cannabis, because a cannabis has a THC component, cannabis has a much greater value, and industrial hemp is certainly the hot-button item right now. So notwithstanding the fact that regulations are still being formulated, excuse me for a second, that they're still being formulated in both federal and state law, there have been some significant changes in federal law that merit your attention. The first is the Federal Agricultural Improvement Act of 2018, or the 2018 Farm Bill, and what And what this did is this removed hemp from under the cannabis umbrella, under the cannabis regulation. And that's significant because it placed it outside of cannabis and into the agricultural commodity. And now it's going to be under the auspices of the Federal Department of Agriculture. And importantly, it can be legally transported across state lines. Cannabis cannot do that. Cannabis is still a Schedule I drug under federal law. Significantly additional processes for the federal government under the State Farm Bill, or, excuse me, the 2018 Farm Bill, for regulating the cultivation of hemp, for regulating the processes of how it's going to be regulated by the federal government, is still being analyzed in the federal level. The federal government has also recommended and invited states to create their own regulation. And frankly, California is one of the leaders of that. But key state legislation is still pending as well. I mentioned at the last meeting, AB 228, which is a, was a proposed bill to allow oil or product from hemp to be into food products. And that regulation has been tabled, and that could have a tremendous impact on this hemp industry as well. So currently, it's not allowed in food products. So notwithstanding the need for more regulations from both the federal, state, and even possibly the local level, the cultivation of hemp, including cultivation in Ventura County, is exploding as a new crop. Reportedly, the number of permits requested to grow hemp in the county is surpassing several standard crops. And we know, at least from our information, thousands of acres are being used now to start growing hemp. And of course, we see another photo from a different location of another hemp field. So I want to briefly, again, discuss differences between cannabis and hemp, or similarities, frankly. And I do this because I want to remind you that when we were getting ready for the cannabis, we knew cannabis was going to be coming to California as a state issue to allow it to be in California. And we spent months, we actually spent years preparing and investigating and analyzing and presenting to you, having workshops on cannabis. And why did we do that? Because we knew we needed to get regulations in place, and we knew that we had concerns about odor, transportation impacts, storage, legality, processing, safety issues, a myriad of issues that we had with cannabis. And I bring that up because with hemp, we have some of these similar significant concerns. We have concerns about odor, we have concerns about transportation impacts, how are they going to affect neighborhoods, business impacts? What's the processing process for this unique material? Are there safety concerns? Are there security concerns? You noted that one slide that had the photo of the sign says, "No THC." One of the reasons they're doing that is because they don't want people jumping over and grabbing that, if it was cannabis, grabbing the cannabis, right? And also, when we had the cannabis regulations initially, we understood that through AMA, which was, again, the Adult Use Act, it allowed people to grow their own plants in their backyards and in their own dwelling. But we also were able to regulate for odor, we were able to regulate for security, it had to be enclosed, it couldn't be seen from the public right away. We're not sure if we're going to have those same concerns with hemp, because, again, it's very similar. I'm going to also mention that we are starting to see a number of requests for industrial hemp-related businesses or operations within our jurisdiction. The challenge is that CBD oil from hemp, for example, is very similar to CBD oil from cannabis. Of course, the cannabis would have the THC component to it, but it makes distinguishing between the two, CBD oil from hemp, CBD oil from cannabis, very challenging, right? And the reason why that's a concern for us is because under our cannabis ordinance, we regulate what we have. Right now, as you know from two weeks ago, we are moving forward with operations agreement for two medical marijuana or cannabis facilities in our city. And we talked about, of course, the challenge with the state allowing deliveries in our city. So we have those concerns with cannabis, and similarly, we're going to have concerns that there might be inscrupulous businesses that start selling CBD oil from hemp and then turn around and sell CBD oil from cannabis. And again, we're not capturing that use, it's prohibited in our city, and obviously, we're not capturing the sales from the cannabis as well. So the authority for the moratorium. Government Code Section 65858 authorizes the city council to adopt a moratorium on any uses that may be in conflict with a contemplated general plan, specific plan, zoning proposal. It does require a four-fifths supermajority vote, at least, for a motion to adopt such an urgency ordinance. The initial ordinance may only be in effect for 45 days, but the city council may extend the time twice, once for 10 months and 15 days, and the second time, if its desires, for a year, for a total of two years. Prior to extending it from the 45-day moratorium, the city council will have to hold a public notice, public hearing, and we will have the discussion. So we do have a purpose for the moratorium, and again, it goes back to the theme of, let's slow this down for a minute, let's take a hold and look at this issue. Do we need local regulations? What are the state regulations going to look like? Are they being formulated to the extent we think are appropriate? What are the federal government regulations looking like? That's in the process, it's underway, but they're not solidified through the whole process yet. We are concerned relating to cultivation, processing, drying, storing, manufacturing of industrial hemp, as well as the non-incidental sales of CBD product from hemp. So we also note, as I noted here, the findings, more state and federal regulations are needed. We need some time to look at possible negative impacts, best practices, whether or not there's going to be potency testing from the state, the ability of the state to hire enough employees to properly certify the various aspects of industrial hemp product. And again, we need the time to study and analyze possible regulations and other safeguards to protect the health, safety, and welfare of our residents. And again, without completed regulations for hemp, the city should just take an initial precautionary step to delay approval of any new permits, we have permitted a few, so it can conduct more research into this issue. And again, we understand hemp is a booming business. We don't take this measure lightly. This is an important step for us because it's a way for the city to control its land use with the authority that given to you by the government code section I mentioned. And that's important because we just need to take an opportunity, through our recommendation at least, is to take an opportunity to slow it down, take a look at it, and see what type of regulations we might need, or what's going to happen by the state or federal level. And of course, we need to look at the potential negative impacts that we might have similar to cannabis activities. And with that said, I also want to make a comment that we're happy to work with state representatives on this issue, we're happy to look and work with stakeholders in the industry, to talk to them about best practices, talk to them about possible regulations if necessary, and have that communication and have that opportunity to work with them. But for now, again, for this moment, the recommendation is to adopt an urgency ordinance. Again, just mentioning that we did take a number of steps to analyze cannabis, we're asking that we slow it down for industrial hemp, to look at the need to control and regulate cultivation, storing, and this various other commercial activities, as well as CBD retail stores in our city. All right, so with that said, the recommendation is to adopt the urgency ordinance by four-fifths vote, based on the findings set forth in the staff report and the proposed ordinance in this hearing, and to return to city council within 45 days to consider any need to extend the moratorium. And to my left, I have Mark Towne for the public, he is our community development director, and we are available for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Council, you have any questions? Councilmember Engler?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question. Hemp now has been downgraded to a Class V substance, it's more of an agricultural product. Do the restrictions that apply to cannabis also apply in terms of how they do their banking? Is it more now just a regular business, or is it still a controlled problem as a cash business?
I think from looking at the State Farm Bill, I think the answer is going to be, it's going to be considered an agricultural product and not be subject to the same concerns. I'd have to look at it a little bit more thoroughly to confirm that, but my suspicion from looking at the federal state, the federal 2018 Farm Bill, would be to actually consider it a new agricultural product, and since it's going to be in that realm, it won't be under the Schedule I drug of cannabis. So I would think they would be able to do the banking.
There's another quick question. Assuming we do a moratorium, will the product still be available in town for people who need it?
Sure, and I should have mentioned that the moratorium that I'm requesting you adopt, it does exempt non-incidental, I'm sorry, exempts incidental CBD sales, which would be 5% or less. We know a number of stores already that have hemp-related products. It's kind of, it's not the primary purpose of their location, for example, a grocery store or a pet's food store, for example, they have some products that we are aware of. And also, we do have three CBD retail stores from hemp, and we have one permitted store that's going, or I should say, a facility that's going to be doing some research and possibly developing makeup and cosmetics, or the cosmetics with, might have a little bit of hemp in it as well.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Jones?
If you're ready for a motion, I'll be glad to make it.
No, we still have public comments.
Oh, public comment, pardon me.
That's okay. Well, if there's no other questions from the council, we've got some speakers, and our first will be Paul Castillo. And following Paul will be Pat McGinnis. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Member, or Mr. Mayor, fellow council members. Just briefly, I just want to state, before voting, truly ask yourselves, is a moratorium needed right now? Is this truly going to help the city? I would propose we go a different route with regulating this crop. As noted, it is an agricultural commodity. I say let's work with the industry, and as it develops, let's prepare regulations accordingly. Kind of take a different route than you did with cannabis, let this grow, see how it develops. And I also want to mention that the activities contemplated are regulated currently under different ordinances. So manufacturing, for example, you have building codes, you have fire codes, things of that nature, that can be used to address the problems noted. And finally, of note, during the initial presentation, the gentleman mentioned the economic state of the city, we need new jobs. This is an incredible plant. It really has potential to change a lot of industries. Councilmember Adam, those bioplastics you mentioned, those can be created right here in the city. But if we initiate this moratorium, all of that's going to stop. So I would just highly suggest, take a look, is this truly needed? Will it help and benefit the city? Or should we allow this type of activity to go forward? It is no longer a controlled substance, but it does look like cannabis, it's an agricultural commodity. It's more akin to strawberries than it is to cannabis. So thank you for your time, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Castillo. Paul McGinnis, or, excuse me, Pat McGinnis, followed by Eric Johnson. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor. You'll notice I'm wearing an Oklahoma hat, and I remember a song I sang when I was a student at Oklahoma. "We don't smoke marijuana in Moschotti." And guess what they did? And I have a speech defect because I've seen B-52 bombers during the Vietnam, and I was exposed to Agent Orange. And one of my favorite shows on TV is Saturday night, game day special, they give out helmet stickers to the outstanding players of the day. I gave a helmet sticker to Chief Tim Hayrow because he said, "I'm not going to act like the morons in Ojai," and the district attorney, Totten, and arrest people for having pot and this and that. He's very smart. He said, "It's all about money." Like Robert Mills said when he was caught naked as chairman of the House Ways and Meetings Committee with the Title Basin Bombshell, and the next morning, he had a different press conference, and this may sound a little bit crazy, but it was on TV, chairman of the Ways and Meetings Committee, he said, "I'm going to have a short press conference, I'm not going to take any questions." Well, he'll say a little bit, money talks and bullshit lasts. The man who gave the speech on behalf of the city is totally wet. He knows nothing about pot or hemp. I smoked a lot of pot in Oklahoma, I haven't smoked it in 20 years, I don't want a store, I don't want a hemp extraction factory. I give another helmet sticker to Al Adam, talking about the Marianas Trench. I spent five months in the Marianas at the time of the microdise, my last year at UCLA, I dove in that area, I've seen that plastic out there. The third helmet sticker I give would be Councilmember Faudia. Bees are a major problem, thanks to man Monsanto and all their telephones. And today, I would give the fourth helmet sticker to the new board of supervisors, man from Seabody Valley, Bob Uwe. He voted with two Democrats and an independent to not have any more oil drilling in the Osnaard community. I don't think we see the mayor change his stripes from his positions on many issues. It took courage for Bob Uwe to say, "No drilling in Osnaard, I have no dog in that hunt, but we should not be having oil drilling near where all the minorities live and the poor housing development." I don't have a 91% rating by the NRA, the mayor does. The mayor's against gay marriage, and the mayor's against gays. He's in support of gay therapy subversion, where you make gays go through tragedy.
Mr. Mayor, point of order.
I'm saying right now...
Mr. McGinnis, there's a point of order. Go ahead, council member. Your time's up. Mr. McGinnis, thank you for your service.
Of course, as I'm criticizing you. And remember one thing, I'll say final, the University of Mississippi has been growing pot for the federal government for 50 years. Women didn't get the votes of 1916, black men didn't know until 1920.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis. That's enough.
You can't keep saying, "Put it off." That's a phony excuse.
Thank you for your service. Our next speaker will be Eric Johnson.
Hi, how are you? My name's Eric Johnson, I live in Newberry Park, I'm a Rotarian in Westlake Village. I own, with my son, the first legal industrial hemp company in Westlake Village. So I am here to speak, you know, for industrial hemp, and then I can answer the councilman's member, we use Chase Bank, you know, with the banking.
Okay.
As far as that goes, you know, it is a legal company. So I'm just here to speak because I was concerned that some of the stores in Thousand Oaks might be shut down. And as far as I know, like with the chamber on Thursday, there's a ribbon-cutting ceremony for the CBD store. So my only concern was that, you know, some of these stores might be closed and some of my sales would be affected. Majority of my sales are to pets and people, and we do sell in Thousand Oaks, Westlake, Agora, and the valley. So that's I, that's about it. Just want to make sure that, you know, this is done right, it's done properly, and, you know, as I'm saying, we already own a company in Westlake Village. All right, guys?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Did you want to? Okay, our next speaker will be Mr. Ed Williams, followed by Mr. Joe Kyle. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for the opportunity to come speak to you about this issue. More than anything, I don't have a particular position on whether or not you should adopt a moratorium on this, but I did want to help explain what some of the current regulations are for the state of California. I'm Ed Williams, I'm your county agricultural commissioner. It is my responsibility to regulate industrial hemp in the county of Ventura. It is my responsibility to regulate industrial hemp in the county of Ventura as far as the cultivation. That's, that's the extent of my, of my authority and my regulation. I don't get involved in any of the processing or sales or any of those items. But I can tell you that there is an extensive regulatory scheme that has been put into place in the state of California in cooperation with the USDA, who is developing federal regulations, as has been stated. We currently register any producer, any grower, who plans to produce either seed for reproduction of hemp or a crop for any purpose. Here in Ventura County, we have approximately 40 registrants that have signed up with my office. We have over 4,000 acres that has been registered for production of industrial hemp. Approximately 2,500 to 3,000 of those acres have been planted. We have been, the state has also put into place requirements for seed cultivars that have been tested to make sure that they are below the 0.3% THC level that's been required. We also have a sampling and testing procedure to where we actually observe or, or are involved in the testing of the industrial hemp at accredited laboratories. We have two of those laboratories here in the county that test the THC content level to make sure that that level is below the 0.3% required by federal law and state law. To date, we've had five samples that have been collected and tested, and all five of those samples have come in well below the, the THC level. All of the signs that, that you saw in the, in the video presentation, that, those, those fields are indeed TA, or industrial hemp and not cannabis. We can verify that. We have verified that. The reason why those signs are required by state law is to make sure there is no confusion by the passing public that it might be, in fact, cannabis. So, so I just, I'm not here to, to advocate one way or the other for you. I just want you to know that there is a robust regulatory scheme in place and that we are managing that.
Thank you. Excuse me, just a moment if you would. Mr. Williams, Councilmember Bill DeLaPena has a question for you.
Good evening, Mr. Williams. Thank you for coming here tonight. I was just wondering, how many, how big is your staff?
My staff, I have a staff of 62 employees, including myself, and 12 of them are involved in, part of their time is involved in regulating hemp. Most of their time, that group is involved in regulating pesticides, but they also do hemp as part of that, their responsibility.
Okay. And are they able to respond to each and every case?
Yes.
And do inspections everywhere?
Yes.
That they're required to?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And then there was also a question from Councilmember Angler.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Then thank you for coming. It's very helpful. The question I have for you, you only are interested in the growing part of it, or do you have some interest also in the processing? Do you, do you have any regulations that also apply there?
I, I have no jurisdiction or involvement in, once the crop is harvested and, and sent for processing, my only responsibility is in, in the cultivation part. I do have a strong interest in making sure that the processing is done properly because that will benefit the agricultural industry in this county. And this is a major, a major opportunity for our growers in Ventura County to, to have a new crop that has some really good remediation qualities. It's frugal on water. There's a lot of good qualities to this, to this crop. The odor I will, I will give you is, is a definite concern. So I, I understand the, some of the concerns that people have there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Our next speaker will be Mr. Joe Kyle. Good evening.
Good evening. Mayor McCoy, Mayor Pro Tem Adam, city council members and city staff. After the long three road, almost now three road, sorry, after the long road of almost three years now of discussing cannabis, not hemp, I feel like we are starting the whole process all over again. As you heard, the farm bill removed hemp as a Schedule I drug and classified it as an agricultural crop, no longer a controlled substance. I just toured county staff through the cannabis greenhouse I work in in Carpentrya. A lot of cities within this county will be moving forward with cannabis and hemp permitting of all types within the near future. The most recent Ventura County Star article stated there is 400, 4,100 acres of hemp currently growing within Ventura County. This will allow for a lot of product to be manufactured within the county, as you just heard as well. If business operations are done as the business stated within the Acorn article, there will be absolutely zero negative effect to the city, such as the carbon filtration that was mentioned. The odor within the actual field is a lot more of the potential to drift versus once that's packed, frozen. There, there's many different ways of processing that, and the most common right now is flash freezing it in the field, which then, bringing it into the actual facility, there's no smell in any way. And then actually manufacturing it, as long as you have and keep up on those carbon filtration systems, there's going to be no negative effect to the, to the neighborhood around it. They will have no impact in any way, shape, or form. I feel that hemp is nothing like cannabis. I feel that a moratorium could be denied, that this moratorium could be denied and ordinance accurately written within the next few weeks, written, sorry, working with the business that wants the permit. These manufacturing processes are being done every day within the city with no second thought because it doesn't involve cannabis, which is actually hemp. Thank you.
Now, we're going to hear from our city attorney, Tracy Noonan.
Did council have any questions before, and then I'll?
They don't appear to have any.
Sorry, just a few things. A couple of reasons why staff brought the moratorium. Again, I want to make it really, I want to impress upon the public and the city council. City does support businesses in Thousand Oaks. You know, we just amended our code recently to make it easier for biotech companies to come into the city. We've adopted a specific plan for the Thousand Oaks Boulevard that relaxes some development standards in order to make it economically viable to do business. And we created an economic development ad hoc committee that focuses on supporting businesses in the community. So the decision, however, to bring a moratorium to the city for consideration is definitely not one that staff takes lightly. I think in the seven and a half years that I've been here, I think that the city's only considered one moratorium, and that was on our Oak Two regulations when we were trying to strengthen those. So this is not something that staff does without careful consideration. When we first, actually, this was just a couple of weeks ago, we were just getting familiar with the hemp industry when we had our discussion on cannabis. It's literally from our position, it's an almost overnight industry. Mr. Kyle mentioned the Ventura County Star article, and if you haven't read it, I recommend you do that. There's been a huge explosion of hemp acres in the county, over 4,100 acres in a very short period of time. And the article notes that there are no processing facilities anywhere in the county. So the article does mention, however, that Thousand Oaks is one of the places that hemp growers are looking at. We don't have any regulations on that. With respect to, I think it was Mr. Kyle, when you were talking about the carbon, what was it called? The carbon?
Filtration.
What was it called, Kyle?
Filtration.
Carbon filtration system. We don't even have the authority to impose something like that right now because we don't have any regulations. Those are the types of things that staff wants to have just a period of time to evaluate. The one thing that I really want to emphasize is that staff actually desires to sit down with people such as Mr. Johnson and Mr. Williams and other stakeholders. We do need to get some better insight into the industry because we just don't know. We do know that it looks like marijuana. We do know that it smells like marijuana. So do we need to do anything like have standards that impose those carbon filtration systems on any type of manufacturing or processing plant in, in the city? That's one of the things we want to look at. With, since there's no other processing facility in the county, we have concerns with 800 to 4,100 acres of crops being cultivated and driven up the Cano grade on massive trucks to one facility in the county. That will have a huge traffic impact and a huge impact on our roads in the city. That's another area that we want to look at. So again, the, the moratorium is, is for 45 days. We will come back to you at the November 5th city council meeting to discuss what we have learned in that period of time. It is our hope to meet with people in the industry and other stakeholders during that time so we have a better understanding of it. And at that time, we might be able to tell you, we will be able to tell you what we've learned and potentially make recommendations on whether we need regulations or don't need regulations. This is simply just an opportunity to pause and let staff catch up to it because, quite honestly, the federal government and the state government are way behind. I don't know if Mr. Powers has anything to add.
I think you summarized most everything. Just one additional point I want to make sure the council is aware of. We do have a consultant team that has supported us throughout the process with, through HDL. They have experience on both cannabis and hemp-related issues across the state. And we have consulted with that team after the, the previous meeting. And they brought forward legitimate concerns that other municipalities have experienced with this type of industry. So these are not unfounded or just pulled out of thin air. Concerns that are worthy of study, that were worthy of bringing the question to the city council because you don't get an opportunity to do it over. Once something is in place, the opportunity to revisit these things really goes away. And so that's why we brought the question in front of the city council out of an abundance of caution. As the city attorney mentioned, you know, we do pride ourselves in being a very business-friendly city. We're also one that tries to ensure that we don't end up with incongruent uses or unintended consequences that can come from business.
Thank you, Ms. Powers. Council discussion? Councilmember Jones?
There's no discussion. I would move the interim urgency ordinance, if you read the title, only further reading be waived and it be adopted.
We have a motion, a couple of comments. Councilmember Angler?
Thank you, Mayor. I think a few weeks ago, we, we revisited the, the cannabis dispensaries that we thought we had settled about a year and a half ago. The state did pull the rug out from everybody in that whole industry, and I, I don't want us to get too far ahead of this new industry and then have to revisit it again. That said, this is an industry, and I'm sure that the people who are, are growing it and want to get into this business of, of processing it are chomping at the bit to be able to do that. So I think in terms of a, a moratorium, I think we do need a breather, we do need a chance to get a, a handle on this. But I would caution that we should be very fast about it so that we can take a look at this, come up with a reasonable way of approaching it as quickly as possible. So with that said, I, I would be in favor of the moratorium. However, I think time is of the essence as well.
Thank you, councilmember. Mayor Pro Tem Adam?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this, we're really looking at a twofold approach here. It's not just hemp, it's also the end product, CBD. Hemp's big business again. Used to be a huge crop decades ago. It's making a big comeback now because of the CBD that it produces. But back in those days, you know, it was a rural industry. It was, it was dried out in the, out in the countryside and in barns. What we're looking at now is bringing, you know, huge amounts of this stuff into the city and drying it in one of our industrial complexes with people all around. And, you know, I mean, I have concerns about the odors, I have concerns about the traffic, I have concerns about, you know, the location. So that stuff's got to be looked at, I really think. I mean, I'm not trying to shut down the industry, but I just think there's, we need time to take a look at how it's going to work. And the second part is the CBD. To me, that's a little more, something we need to look at a little closer. You know, there's applications, have CBD stores on T.O. Boulevard. We already have two. I think there's potentially three or four more. And the proliferation of stores on the Boulevard, they're selling a product that is really not particularly well-regulated at this point. They don't test it for contaminants. I mean, I have the, I have the stats right here. Two-thirds of CBD products are mislabeled. They either have too much TH, too much THC, too little THC, or, or none at all. Or the THC levels too, I'm sorry, too much CBD, too little CBD, or none at all, and the THC levels are off. And they also have contaminants they're not being tested for. The FDA is sending letters out on this stuff constantly to these CBD producers, saying, "Clean it up. This stuff's no good." So I'm concerned about the safety of this stuff. I mean, you can vape CBD now, and they're finding cough syrup in the CBD vaping solutions. All right? They are. So, yeah, I mean, I'm sure some of it's good, but some of it might not be so good. So we have to be sure that the CBD stuff is checked for its THC, for its contaminants. There should be, it should be just like any other product, standardized labels, there should be, you know, independent testing, all that stuff. And, and that's just not happening right now. And I don't want to see that kind of stuff going out in the Boulevard and not being safe. I'm concerned about that. So that's another thing we can look at. You know, maybe CBD should be sold at our medical cannabis facilities. Maybe that's the best place for it. And it should have a certificate of analysis, right, on CBD? And it should have that hemp authority symbol on it. Most of it doesn't. We don't know what's in it, where it's coming from. So anyway, key here is, need a breather, got to make sure this product's safe, gives us a chance to step back, look at the situation, make sure it's safe for the city's out in Thousand Oaks.
Just one additional point of clarification. One of the speakers mentioned the moratorium will not have any effect on any existing or permitted businesses.
That is correct.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. I, I would just add, and I was concerned for you, Mr. Johnson, I wanted to make sure that was covered. I have, I have no problem with CBD or hemp, but I, I have no problem with the staff asking for more time to process this. I think 45 days, beyond that, you're going to start losing some support on this council. I don't think 45 days is going to hinder anybody. So I'm good. Would you prepare the vote?
The motion passes 5-0, and your ordinance title is an interim urgency ordinance declaring a moratorium on approval or issuance of any permit, license, or entitlement relating to applications for cultivation, processing, drying, storing, and manufacturing of industrial hemp, as well as non-incidental retail sale of products derived in any part from industrial hemp seeds. Ordinance number 1665 NS.
Thank you, and thank you to all who came down tonight. Mr. Williams, thank you as well. That'll bring us to item 9C, another department report, elections update, and that will be led by you.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Tonight's presentation will cover the city's campaign contributions limit, as well as an update on the city council vacancy process as mandated by Thousand Oaks Municipal Code. In 1998, the city of Thousand Oaks adopted a local campaign finance ordinance. In 2013, the ordinance was extensively reviewed and updated. The updated included an increase of the campaign contribution base limit from $380 to $500, and directed the base limit be reevaluated in five years, which was December 2018. The code also mandates city council to adjust the contribution limits in March of every odd year to reflect any change in the California Consumer Price Index, CPI. The last adjustment occurred in 2017, reflecting a $530 limit effective the 2018 election. In fall of 2018, staff determined it was best to defer the five-year reevaluation process due to the November election and other pressing issues in the city. Per the ordinance, staff prepared the calculation for the new limit based on data from the March 2019 CPI, resulting in an increase to $560. This limit would be applicable to the November 2020 election, should the city council wish to maintain the $500, $500 limit as the base. For comparison purposes, staff polled Ventura County cities to determine which cities adopted campaign contribution ordinances and the amount campaign contribution ordinances and the amounts of their limits. Out of the nine cities, three have campaign contribution limits. Simi Valley has a higher limit of $1,000, and two cities, Fillmore and Ventura, have lower limits. Fillmore's limit is $250. Ventura has a voluntary expenditure ceiling in the amount of $34,000 and contribution limits. If a candidate chooses not to accept the ceiling, the contribution limit is $150. If a candidate accepts, the contribution limit increases to $325. The remainder of the cities and the county follow state law, which does not limit contributions. The city's current $500 base limit is the average amount when compared to other local Staff reviewed the city's last five elections, and the average amount for both contributions and expenditures was about $30,000. During the 2016 and 18 general municipal elections, staff did not receive comments from candidates related to the limit. As directed in the ordinance, every five years, the City Council must evaluate and give staff direction regarding the $500 base limit and setting the amount for future elections. If the City Council chooses to maintain the $500 base limit and set the next reevaluation for December 2023, staff will return to City Council at the next regularly scheduled meeting to introduce the ordinance. Should the City Council provide direction on potential changes to the $500 base limit, staff will return at a future meeting with an update or a draft ordinance for City Council's Now I'm going to provide an update on the City Council vacancy process. In 2012, City Council adopted a citizen-driven initiative requiring a special election rather than an appointment to fill a council vacancy. In early 2018, state legislation SB 415 passed, requiring that cities consolidate their elections with statewide elections. The impetus for SB 415 was low voter turnout, 25% or less, during elections not held on statewide election dates where local, state, and federal issues are on the ballot. Thousand Oaks already consolidates our elections, so this law didn't directly affect us, but as you'll see, there were unintended consequences. Later that year, City Council rescinded Resolution 98195 to no longer require a special runoff election in the case of a tie vote. Instead, City Council authorized a Ventura County clerk to resolve a tie vote by lot. This change was made to avoid the high cost of conducting a special runoff election in 2018, which was estimated at $345,000 for a consolidated non-statewide election, and over $500,000 for a standalone election conducted by the city. By the end of 2018, as a result of SB 415 eliminating the need for most standalone municipal elections, Martin &amp; Chapman, an essential elections company in California, closed. In addition, in April 2019, City Council reaffirmed its top priorities, which include a priority number four, fiscal sustainability. Staff analyzed the potential effect of the current Thousand Oaks election practices on the cost to the city, which could be considerable. What does this change in legislation mean for our city? With the rescission of Resolution 98195, the city is no longer required to hold a special runoff election in the case of a tie vote. However, our municipal code does require a special election in the event of an unscheduled vacancy. The special election must take place on the next established election date, not less than 114 days from the call of the election. There are three types of elections determined by the date the election will be held and the county's ability to conduct the election. Consolidated elections are conducted by Ventura County Elections Division, minimizing the responsibility and cost for cities. A consolidated election is guaranteed on a statewide election date, which the county will always conduct. Consolidated elections may also take place on non-statewide election dates. However, the county may not always be able to conduct these elections. A standalone election occurs when the county is unable to conduct the election, and therefore the responsibility of conducting the election is the city's. Historically, when standalone elections were required, the primary resource for city clerks across the state was Martin &amp; Chapman Company. Martin &amp; Chapman was a leader in the election industry, providing election supplies, services, and consultation to over 400 cities and organizations in the states of California and Nevada. The passage of SB 415 forced Martin &amp; Chapman to close their doors. This leaves the few cities that may still need to conduct standalone elections, such as Thousand Oaks, without any standalone election support. Without Martin &amp; Chapman services, cities no longer have the resources or staff to conduct a standalone election, making it a difficult and cost-prohibitive task. This table from page four of your staff report provides a comparison of the costs and voter turnout from three local elections. The city of Thousand Oaks 2015 special consolidated non-statewide election, the city's 2016 regular consolidated statewide election, and the city of Oxnard's 2018 standalone election. On June 2nd, 2015, as a result of Councilmember Irwin's election to the State Assembly, per the municipal code, the city conducted a special consolidated election to fill the vacancy. The election occurred on a non-statewide election date, and the city contracted with the county at a cost of $194,000. Although the city was the only city in the county to have an election, and the city council seat was the only item on the ballot, the county was able to conduct the consolidated election. This special election resulted in 26% voter turnout at a cost of over $10 per voter. In comparison, one year later, the cost to conduct the November 2016 regular consolidated statewide election for two seats and one ballot measure was considerably lower, at a cost of $47,000, with a significantly higher voter turnout at 86% and at a cost of 70 cents per voter. Finally, on May 1st, 2018, the city of Oxnard conducted a special standalone election due to an effort to recall four council members at a cost of $403,000, with 17% voter turnout and at a cost of over $30 per voter. The $403,000 does not include staff time, election equipment that was provided to the city gratis, and temporary staff costs as neighboring and retired city clerks volunteered their time to assist with the canvassing process. Although the county agreed to conduct Oxnard's election, the timing did not work, so the city chose to conduct a standalone election with the assistance of an elections consultant. As I previously mentioned, the type of election the city conducts is dependent upon the established election date, not less than 114 days from the date the election is called. The elections code establishes election dates as follows: March of each year, April and each even-numbered year, and November of each year. Guaranteed statewide election dates only occur in March and November of even years. The county is scheduled to conduct the statewide elections in March and November of 2020 and Staff contacted the county to inquire about their ability to provide election services on non-statewide election dates. County staff reported that they will make every effort to conduct elections for cities, and their confidence is extremely high at 99%. In the event the city is unable to conduct a consolidated elections, these are the costs and voter turnout figures that we can expect for a standalone election. Staff based the cost estimate on 80,000 registered voters and the percentage of voter turnout at the city's last special election in 2015, which was 26%. The cost for the city to conduct a standalone election by city staff would be $600,000, which is, which does not include citywide internal staff time. Here, we compare the cost and expected voter turnout of the standalone election with those of the consolidated elections. This is a condensed version of the table depicted on attachment three of your staff report. As you can see, under the first column, for a consolidated statewide election, the cost is low at $68,000, and the voter turnout is high at approximately 75%. The cost per voter is $1.13, and we base these figures on the city's past two similar elections. The possible dates for these consolidated statewide elections are March and November in even years, meaning there are four dates in a four-year cycle when we can hold this type of election. In the second column, for consolidated non-statewide elections, the possible available election dates are April even years and March and November in odd years. These would occur six times in a four-year cycle. These are the dates when the county believes there is a 99% chance they would be able to conduct the election. The cost for consolidated non-statewide is much higher at $300,000, with lower voter turnout at 26%, and the cost per voter is $14.42. The last column is the same as column two, as it relates to the election dates and voter turnout. However, the cost depicted is for a standalone election. That's the 1% chance when the county would be unable to conduct the election, requiring the city to conduct the election. As we saw in the last table, the cost is estimated at $600,000. However, it should be noted, the estimate does not reflect citywide staff time that would be required to conduct the election. Due to this, the high cost of operation, the cost per voter is $28.85. In light of this new legislation and the closure of Martin &amp; Chapman, staff prepared this update on the costs associated with special elections for City Council vacancy process as required by the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code. Staff will continue to monitor new legislation and communicate with the county on their ability to provide consolidated election services during non-statewide election dates, and we will update the City Council as merited. Recommendations for this evening? Campaign finance options? Direct staff to maintain the $500 base limit and reevaluate in five years? Or provide direction to staff on changes to the $500 base limit and return at a future meeting for City Council's consideration? City Council vacancies? Receive informational report and provide direction to staff, if any. And that concludes my report, and staff is available to answer questions.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That was very helpful. So council questions, we'll begin with Councilmember Bill de la Peña.
Thank you, Mayor McCoy. So from, from this report, am I then to assume that there was one law firm or one firm in the entire state of California, single-handedly responsible for handling special elections or runoffs?
Mayor Bill, or Councilmember Mayor, Councilmember Bill de la Peña, that is correct. The only firm is Martin &amp; Chapman Company. They were out of the city of Anaheim here in California, and they were the only company throughout California and Nevada that provided the service primarily in California and some parts of Nevada, and they were in business for 64 years or so.
You spoke of unintended consequences of SB 415. Is, do we know through our Legislative Affairs analyst whether Sacramento is aware of the unintended consequences this bill has, and maybe that Senate bill needs to be amended?
I do know that the CEO of Martin &amp; Chapman did reach out. They did send letters. I know there were many, the league was involved, and many standalone cities were, did, you know, or many cities throughout California did go ahead and relay that, hey, this was problematic, especially as it relates to Oxnard's, the recall election. I mean, that is another issue that results in, you know, will result in a standalone election potentially. High probability because of the fact of the timing of a recall election. There's only a one-month period in which you have to hold that election. So that is problematic for, for every city in California.
I would think then perhaps we need to contact our state representatives to work on this, because it's inconceivable that we're putting democracy on hold because people don't know how to run an election, don't have equipment to run an election, and don't have money to run an election. So that's just my two cents.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Angler?
Thank you for the presentation. It appears that we should plan our vacancies for even-numbered years, it seems, that that would be a good fiscal responsibility on our part. However, I don't think that's in, within the realm of our ability. I think the question I have maybe is more for City Attorney Noonan. As I recall, this ordinance was based on a, on a citizen initiative that was brought to the council, and the council brought that and adopted it. Does that mean that we are unable to amend it from the, from the daisier? Do we need to go with another citizen initiative? Or is it possible for us to amend it and address this issue where we don't put our city at risk for these special elections?
Since it wasn't a citizen initiative, the City Council cannot make any changes to the ordinance without going to a vote of the people. And coincidentally, the city clerk and I've had, and the city manager and I have had many conversations about, about the costs associated with the elections when they're standalone elections. And we were actually contemplating bringing a potential voter initiative for City Council to initiate, to add just the word consolidated election to the language. However, when the county clerk's office indicated with a 99% certainty that they would be able to run it, we decided not to do that at this time. But it's always an option that the City Council has.
Mayor Protam Adam?
Well, if there's not any more questions, I'd like to make a motion.
We have a speaker.
Oh, we do.
We do. Mr. McFerris.
Mick.
We didn't want to jump ahead of you.
McFerris, Newbury Park area of Thousand Oaks. I did want to give the opportunity to be able to kind of address and maybe fill in and round out some of the discussion relating to the report you received today. So certainly a lot of the report you have, and I think some of it also sort of fills in the gaps with the discussion you mentioned here in the supplemental packet you, you received. So SB 415 was a piece of state legislation that did change how regularly scheduled local elections happen to increase turnout. And there's a specific provision, at least in the law, that says it does not affect special elections. It did, as we've talked about here, have the unintended consequences of having a marketplace change in which a firm that provides consulting services went out of business. The, the thing is though, is that cost of a special election, or cost of an election in general, is always used as an argument not to hold an election. It happens every time. It happens every time that is brought up for discussion, and the price tag starts to, you know, the numbers go into the six digits, and people go, oh my God, it's terrible. We can't end up having an election. Can't we find some other way so that we don't do this? It always happens. But whenever, whenever councils are provided the opportunity to hold an election, even in cases where it is not cost prohibitive, councils have demonstrated that they still will not hold that election. They will not let the voters select for themselves who was on the council. And that happened in Thousand Oaks. And the history of this initiative starts in 2005, when Ed Masry unfortunately had to resign due to health issues. The council had an opportunity, with three years left on his term, to either fill it by appointment or hold an election. They chose to fill it by appointment. And when you have four votes that can be a majority, it allows the council to do great many things, such as approving an interim emergency ordinance, to where the voters would not have the opportunity to have their own representative on the council. Fast forward seven years to 2012, fortunately Dennis Gillette had to resign due to health issues, and even though it was presented to the council that a special election would happen in November with the highest turnout and the least expense, the council still chose to appoint for nearly three years left on the term without having an election. That spurred the voters to sign petitions and brought it to the council, and as was mentioned- And as was mentioned, it was approved by the council as if it were, consistent with the initiative process, as if it were approved by the voters. So there are two elements that are important here in one recommendation. Two elements, one, there's nothing in state law nor the cost structures of holding an election that have changed between then and now to justify changing the ordinance. I think that we're still in place and the voters still want that. Secondly, as was pointed out by the city attorney, there's a section that requires that any amendment or repeal has to be approved by the voters. So you need to have the voters consent on it. And the recommendation is that since it's important to pay for elections, it is important to pay for the mechanism of free and fair elections so the voters can elect their representatives, you should set up in your budgeting process a democracy reserve or something that makes sure that enough money gets sent to be able to pay for our elections every two years that are at the cheapest and consolidated levels, and stores enough in reserve to be able to pay for a special election when and if it ever occurs. That's the way to handle it. It's a way, rather than change the ordinance and undermine the democratic process, use those $175 million worth of revenue that you have every year to be able to tuck a little away and pay for, pay for some elections.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris.
Thank you for letting me go over time.
That's all right. It was insightful, and I appreciate it. Councilmember Jones?
Yeah, I didn't want to talk about that aspect, and I appreciate your comments tonight. I agree with them, so thank you for coming. My remarks had to do with another matter, though, so.
Okay.
I, in looking through all these items on the list here, it seems to me that the cost of campaigning has risen significantly over the years, and this limit based on $500 seems unrealistic to me. I think the minimum for a basic campaign, and I've done this several times, for flyers, signs, newspaper ads, and just partial mailings, is probably $30,000 to $40,000. And to try to raise that at the base of $500 or $530 or $560 is very difficult, and probably even higher need for a first-time candidate that has no name ID. I think therefore many candidates loan their campaigns money at the outset because they've got to buy these things right away, and therefore they loan their campaign $20,000, $30,000 with the hope that later they can get contributions that will ease some of that pain and perhaps take care of a little bit of it. So I don't believe, and I don't know if there's anybody that feels the way I do on the council, but I don't believe therefore that the financial ability to come up with $20,000 to $30,000 to give you a fighting chance to launch a successful campaign should be a criterion of somebody who wants to run for council the first time. Now, I know that person may not easily get higher contributions either, but I think he has more of a chance to do that. I think the Simi Valley, a minimum of $1,000 is more realistic based on particularly the high cost of mailing now. I mean, to do a citywide mailing is just phenomenal. I've never been able to do that. I've done some minor mailing, so I would just like the council to maybe consider the fact that the $500 base is low in proportion to the cost of running a campaign in Thousand Oaks that would have a chance of being successful. That's all I had to say, Mr. Ferris.
Thank you, Councilmember. There appears to be no other speakers, but Mayor Pro Tem, you, Adam, you were gonna...
Oh, I was just, hey Mick, I was just gonna ask you a quick question. Do you remember the percentage of approval on the initiative? What did it, what did it win by?
It actually, it never got to the ballot. This was where the council actually, in, I believe their wisdom.
Right, right, right.
Agreed it was gonna pass, and they just passed it into law.
Of course, of course. I should've known that.
So 100 percent.
Okay.
And there was a very good...
It was unanimous.
And there was a very good reason the council did that.
Thanks, Mick.
Yeah. Thanks.
Councilmember Bill de la Peña? Thank you, Mayor McCoy. Yes, the council adopted the Right to Vote Initiative. What I wanted to mention is, I think Mr. Ferris put it very eloquently, it's, there is a price for every election regardless of the turnout, whether it's 26 percent or 86 percent. And even at 26 percent, that is a wonderful voter turnout in a non-consolidated election, simply because when you look at our neighbor LA County, they're in the single digits by now on, off cycle. So 26 is really a very good voter turnout. I also, so I would not obviously be in favor of changing anything to this schedule, especially since Ventura County Elections Office said they are 99 percent certain they can handle the election. The coin toss and the runoff that the council approved about a year ago, I have to say that the, not sure if I would want a tie to be decided by a coin toss, and I'm just wondering whether we could revisit that resolution that states that to, that a tie would be decided by a coin toss. I'm not sure how my colleagues feel about this.
How about cutting cards?
They're all by lot.
Arm wrestle, okay. No, I mean, go ahead.
I'll have to say, Clark, respond, but I think one of the, as we've talked about a little bit, you know, it may seem relatively arbitrary, but there needs to be some mechanism in there to break the tie, and your options are actually fairly limited when it comes to that, so she can speak to that.
We actually did reach out to Mark Lund, and he said it's an actual coin that they, because we were curious, different counties do it differently, so we were curious, you know, we asked the question, and that was the response, it's the actual coin flip. But to the question as it relates to the rescission of Resolution 98195, when we come back to call, when we, we'll come before you in June 2020 to call the November election, at that time we will be bringing forward the resolution that requires the mechanism that we'll use to determine a tie vote. And at that time, so that'll be coming at every future election, and so at that time we can go ahead and give you, we'll give two, there are two options, it's either by lot or runoff election, so that we can bring that to council in June of 2020.
Great. Thank you, thank you so much. And regarding the campaign contributions, I would actually be in favor of just keeping the baseline and then continuing with the CPI.
Mayor Pro Tem, Adam?
Yeah, on those campaign contributions, it was 2012 that we came up with the $500 baseline. You know, I hadn't really given it much thought until Councilmember Jones brought this up, but he's right. It's very expensive to run a campaign in Thousand Oaks. I know, I've run four of them. And I wonder if maybe we shouldn't consider upping that a little bit. I mean, it's been seven years, and I know we increase it by the CPI, but we're only one of four cities that even has a limit. And I don't have a problem with a limit, but for practical purposes, it is expensive to run a campaign. I mean, if you, if it, the average campaign costs $30,000, and we're getting $500, that's 60 people to pay the max to even get to the $30,000. So I wonder, I mean, it's not gonna be make it or break it for me, but I think it might be worth a discussion that, you know, maybe we think about that, upping that 500 to, I don't know, maybe 750, would that be outrageous to think about? Again, just discussion, we've all run campaigns here, Claudia has, Bob has, Rob has, Ed has. Anybody feel like we should go a little higher?
Well, Councilmember Engler?
Having just run my first election.
There you go.
Very successfully, I might add.
The, the 500, actually $530 amount that we were limited to, and I can only speak to my own experience, was not a hindrance. There is some benefit to having to get many smaller contributions in that you need to talk to more people that way. We, the CPI does cover it somewhat, the increase that has happened over the years. I think city clerk mentioned that we'd be going to 560.
Yes.
At this, at this next election as a maximum donation. So I don't see the need to go above the 500 since we are doing CPI with it, and there are some benefits in needing to go out there and talk to a lot of people to get those donations. That said, it is very expensive to run a race here, especially as somebody who doesn't have a name recognition that is out there.
Very true.
Councilmember Bill de la Peña?
Thank you, Mayor McCoy. I remember my first election, I spent $7,000. And the last election, I, I've always spent the least amount of money of any incumbent running. In fact, Mr. Engler doubled the amount of money that I raised. So, you know, you don't have to raise 70, $80,000 if you're incumbent to run for reelection. I think if, if we keep it at the $500 plus CPI, which would bring it to 560, I think that is a very healthy amount. And yes, Mr. Engler is right, it forces you to go out there and talk to more people, that's true. But we know by Mr. Jones having run several campaigns, you knock on doors, spend a small amount of money, and you win elections.
Would you like to know what I spent in 1970 to get elected?
Well, yeah, why don't you indulge us then?
$2,000.
$2,000, yes. So elections are expensive, are as expensive as you want them to be.
Well, it looks like it's two to two. Is there a motion?
Well, hey, I, I just thought it might be worth discussing.
Well, I just thought it was a little hard on first time, you know. I think that in a democracy, we like to have people feel that they can run for the first time, and it's harder for them to get their name in circulation. They start out with no name identification. A lot of them are young, and I just believe it is difficult for them to get anywhere near a minimum amount of money that you need, $30,000 or $40,000 if they're limited to the base of $500. There's no guarantee they're gonna get enough money the other way either, but I think it gives new people with no name ID more of a fighting chance. That's my thinking.
Well, since I brought it up, I mean, it's a good discussion, and I am not sensing the temperature of the council to really change the amount, but I think you bring up some good points, Ed, about that. So unless you want to chime in, Mayor McCoy?
I do, but Councilmember Bill de la Peña wanted to speak.
Oh, I was gonna make a motion, but go ahead.
Well, I, just briefly, it gives incumbents an advantage as well when you raise the cap or the base. It does, and incumbent will always outspend a newcomer, except in Mr. Engler's case and my case.
Well, an incumbent has an inherent advantage to begin with, being an incumbent, but anyway.
I think you do encourage wealthy people to run, because I believe it's common knowledge that the Supreme Court decision that said money is speech, speech is money, which I don't agree with, said that there can be no limit on the candidate himself, because the ability to spend money is free speech. I think if we want to get into a constitutional debate, I believe that Supreme Court was wrong. I don't think money is speech. I think that we're all born with an equal right to speak, but we're not all born with an equal amount of money. So money is a tool, money is a, gives one the ability to speak, okay? But it is not speech, so, I don't know, I don't want to get into this discussion, but I'm just saying we're encouraging wealthy people to run for city council, because there's no limit. They can give themselves $50,000. I'm just thinking that poor people ought to have an equal chance to run with rich people. I guess I'm an egalitarian, right? Thank you.
Well, I would chime in by saying I have no problem with an increase in the individual contribution as long as we would have a cap on the total amount you could raise. It's a lot of work to raise money.
Oh, a cap on the total amount?
Yeah.
Well, they do in Ventura.
Yeah, like what Ventura does. So we get to that point quicker, but you limit it so that, you know, someone just can't be awash with funds. But easier is, I'm open to that. So there's a balance in it, I'm open to discussion later, but...
Well, to be honest with you, Mayor McCoy, I would not, I wouldn't want to limit people to how much they could raise. I think it's, it's their right to raise as much or as little as they want.
Understood.
But I, okay, it's good discussion, though.
I don't think we're gonna come to, I think we just stay with what we got.
I think, well, if I may, I'll make the motion.
Yeah, I would like that.
And I appreciate your thoughts, Ed.
Thank you.
It's worth discussing, but at this point I would move that we keep the 500 base rate, increase it by the CPI, that brings it up to 560. And I appreciate the report on the, on the election status. The initiative is, is in place, and it needs to stay in place, and with that 99 percent probability the county would step in, I think that would alleviate it. You know, but sometimes democracy is not cheap, you know? The people have a right to speak, and that initiative makes sure that happens, so.
Here, here.
Anyway, my motion's on the 500 with the CPI increase.
Do we need a vote on that, Madam Clerk? Okay, if you would prepare the vote.
The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you very much. And we have no committee reports. City manager, follow-up?
Thanks so much, Mayor McCoy. Our next regularly scheduled meeting will be two weeks, in two weeks, on the 8th of October. We have several special presentations, one from Five Star Theatricals, recognition of the Canaho Senior Volunteer Program Charity Karaoke Event, and a presentation from Ventura County Behavioral Health. We have a public hearing for our 2019 Triannual Water Quality Report, our water and wastewater financial plans, and proposed rate adjustments, along with an anticipated pre-screen of the, with daylight, Thousand Oaks LLC, that's the Timber School Site Project. So that is it for that evening. Just a reminder to the public and the council that a week from tomorrow night, on Wednesday the 2nd, we have our next large community gathering for the general plan, where we have world-recognized Speaker Charles Montgomery will be here. He's a well-known author and of a book called Happy City, and he will be here to help to inspire us and prepare us for our embarking on our general plan update process. That'll be at 6:00 PM in this room here, and encourage everyone to spread the word on that. That's all.
A good night to the good citizens of Thousand Oaks. We are adjourned.